Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Covington Planning Commission meeting for July 15th, 2021. It is 6:30 PM. My name is Jonathan Ingram. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission, and I am calling this meeting to order tonight. Let's go through roll call. Mr. Murray Williams. Mr. David Cottle.
I am here.
Ms. Jennifer Gilbert Smith.
Here.
Mr. Joe Columber.
Here.
Ms. Kathy Foster.
Here.
Mr. Darren Groff.
Groff is here.
Groff, I apologize there. I will try to remember. And I still don't see Murray.
Mr. Chairman, I forgot. We had an email from Murray saying he would be absent this evening, so we'll need to excuse him at a later point in the meeting.
No problem at all. Ryan, can we please have an American flag? And everyone else, could you please mute yourselves and rise while we recite the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ryan. Do we have, does any commissioner wish to take action regarding the agenda? I will make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented to us. Does anyone wish two seconds?
I do make that motion to approve the agenda as we.
I do not wish to make any statement regarding my motion. David, would you like to make any motion or statement regarding your second?
No.
Would any commissioner like to comment on the motion? I will call for a vote. Please raise your hand and verbally indicate by saying aye if you approve the motion. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please verbally say nay and raise your hand. The motion passes six to zero. Does any commissioner wish to take action regarding the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, including the minutes as presented.
Do we have a second?
I second that motion.
Jennifer, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Actually, this is funny. I'm sorry. I just noticed this. Within the minutes on page four, there were some motions there at the top, and it says Commissioner Jennifer Gilbert-Smith-Joe Columber moved. So I don't know which one of it was that made the motion, but obviously, I mean, I don't think it could have been two of us same time, maybe?
We can, we can correct the minutes, Commissioner, to reflect who made the motion.
Okay, so I'll revise my motion with that correction.
I think technically you have to withdraw your previous motion and make a new one, but let's consider that done.
And I'll second you.
Hurry. All right. Do you want to, do you wish to speak to your motion? Do you wish to speak to your second?
No.
Does any commissioner wish to speak to the motion? All right, I will call for a vote. Please indicate by saying aye and raising your hand visually in front of your camera. If you approve, aye.
Aye.
Is it, if you are opposed, please say nay and raise your hand in front of your camera. The motion passes six to zero. Thank you, everyone. We all began our first citizen comment period. I note that we do have attendees. The citizen comment period is to provide the opportunity for members of the audience to address the commission on items either not on the agenda or not listed as a public hearing. The chair will open this portion of the meeting and ask for a show of hands of those persons wishing to address the commission. When recognized, please approach the virtual podium, give your name and city of residence, and state the matter of your interest. If your interest is an agenda item, the chair may suggest that your comments wait until that time. Citizen comments are directed to the Planning Commission only, not to the audience, not to the staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate. Citizen comments will be limited to four minutes for citizen comments and four minutes for any unfinished business. If you require more than this allotted time, we can place your item on a future agenda. If you anticipate your comments taking longer than the allotted time, you are in contact to contact the planning department, and that is Mr. Ryan Harriman here. At least for now. Ten days in advance of the meeting so that your item may be placed on the next available agenda. With that, I now declare the citizen comment period open. Does anyone wish to speak? I will remind those of you on the phone that you need to press star nine to raise your hand.
You have Mr. Tom Russell has been authorized to speak.
Okay, do you hear me? We do. Okay, so I'd like to speak a little bit about the town center, the city center zoning area. I happen to live in the only neighborhood that is zoned as such. And exactly why it was zoned that way, I don't understand because it's a neighborhood. It's probably one of the older neighborhoods in Covington. And honestly, in my opinion, it should have been zoned neighborhood with office, like similar to the neighborhood that is right directly behind us. And I understand that it was probably done to keep the town center zoning all together in one big group without a slice in the middle. But it is a neighborhood and putting, there's, there are a lot of restrictions that goes along with the town center zoning that a neighborhood shouldn't have to deal with. So that's something that I have a problem with. I'm not sure exactly how to address it formally, whether there's paperwork or something that can be done to have it looked at and considered for rezoning or something of that nature. Thank you.
I would remind everyone to keep your microphones muted if you're not actively speaking, please. Tom, thanks for your comments. I'm sure the commissioners will discuss that a little bit later. Does anyone else wish to speak? Please raise your hand in Zoom. If you're on the phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once again, does anyone wish to speak? Please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, Ryan, do you concur?
I concur.
We will move on. The citizen comment period is now closed. There will be a second citizen comment period later this evening. We also have a public hearing coming up, and there's opportunities to speak during that. We now will begin the opening of our public hearing. This is public hearing is to consider the proposed comprehensive plan, future land use map adjustments, and down development regulation code amendments to the Covington Municipal Code related to the development of downtown Covington. There are a number of materials attached to the agenda. Most of those are links. If you wish to follow along, I suggest you go ahead and open those links. I hereby declare the public hearing open. Ryan, would you go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Ryan Harriman, City of Covington Planning Manager. It is our privilege to bring forward these amendments to the downtown codes. We call them the form-based code amendments, the SEPA infill exemption, and the multifamily tax exemption amendments. At this point, I will turn the meeting over to Bob Bangford, a planner with Makers, and he will be leading us through our discussion this evening and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ryan. Good evening, Chair and planning commissioners. I'm going to try to share my screen here to get the presentation started. Have to bear with me for a couple of minutes. I've got my eighteen-month-old with me until my wife gets back, so I apologize. There might be some side chatter. Let me know if you see the slideshow yet.
I do see your slideshow, and we forgive you in advance if your eighteen-month-old interrupts you.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, let's see slideshow from beginning. Okay, are we good? Thank you, Ryan. Okay, I gave this presentation to, I believe, all you were there two weeks ago. I cut out a number of slides, and there have been a few additions, and we'll, we'll go over those, and Ryan's going to help me as well. Just a little bit about the why again. Since, since 2010 update, there's been concerns have been raised over the quality of new development. Also, downtown has grown much faster than expected, sixty-nine percent over the last ten years, and significant economic development is anticipated, especially with utility improvements and infrastructure investment. So the intent here is to make the code adjustments really fit with the regional real estate, retail and construction, and trends and best practices. So the outcome of this is to try to create a hybrid form-based code that supports downtown as a compact and pedestrian-friendly business district. So and also Lisa Greeter from Burke is here. We have a new code section that exempts certain types of development, construction downtown from environmental review, and she'll talk to a few slides on that. The project schedule, we're nearly at the finish line here. This timeline shows starts from back last spring and includes a number of the community outreach processes that we've gone through and also goes through some of the SEPA infill process that we have gone through, and we're looking at a follow-up meeting with City Council on August the 10th and potential action that evening. So I'm going to start digging into some of the code updates, so I wanted to pull out some of the five key features of this code that we're doing. The big one is making it easier to use and more predictable and more understandable to, to all. Another part, strengthening and prioritizing the community design standards, providing a focus on the town center development at former elementary school, and providing a clear framework for the form of redevelopment, and, and and also retaining some of the current approaches where they're appropriate and where those are working well. So some of the new updates since, I believe, February in the first draft that was presented, there have been a number of updates, but in all honesty, they're, most of these are pretty minor. There's been a number of changes made for setbacks, self-storage facilities. There's a number of new terms that have been made, standards for electrical vehicle parking, and clarifications for how landscaping lighting are applied, and a number of other smaller things. And I will say, most recently here at our last meeting, we made three notable changes at the June 17th Planning Commission meeting, and I'll walk through those. As well, we had the final draft that you have has a number of changes that we made to really get it ready for publishing. So the definition section, for instance, we're kind of changing that approach. There had been a section number for every single definition, and we're changing that approach and limiting those. So in this publishing draft here, we included every single definition to show that struck. The other thing is we've, we've accepted changes from we've accepted changes in chapter eighteen thirty-one, which is the downtown form-based code because we're replacing the entire chapter. So because of that statement, we're able to simply just show it as accepted, and so you don't have to bother with the messy track changes for that chapter. And then also Madrona Law has done a great legal review for the document, and so we've had some discussions with Ryan and fully reviewed their suggestions. And so there are a number of changes in there based on their review, and these are all largely, well, they are, they are all just simply editing types of changes and not policy types changes. And I think with that, I think Ryan was going to take over to talk about a few other things here, most recent changes. Ryan?
Thanks, Bob. I'm going to share my screen if I can do that with you still doing that with yours. I'm going to have you stop sharing your screen for a moment, and I'm going to start sharing mine if I can find the document. All right, can everybody see this? Dodger head, thank you. Okay, so this is what Bob was talking about that we received from Madrona Law, Legal Counsel in conjunction with the city attorney regarding the flexibility sections that are within the current draft of the form-based code, and legal requested that we modify some of the language and tighten some of the things up that way that it's easier to administer, and there is control from a director's standpoint when they do go forward and issue some type of departure. So let's go through this. Eighteen thirty-one, two, three, zero is the first one. I'm just going to scroll down if my computer will act like it's supposed to. So subsection three, you know, we had this in there for large visible blank walls of variety. So we just took out four large visual blank walls, and we've just put a variety. So what we got to do in there is just clean that language up a little bit, and we're going to have that within the draft that goes to the City Council if the Planning Commission accepts those minor changes. The next one is when we talk about firewalls. Before it said, "The director may waive this requirement due to neighboring property permit considerations." We added this language in there at the request of Madrona. Tightens it up a little bit, makes it less cumbersome, allows some flexibility, but at the same time doesn't really waver too much from what we had already previously talked about. Moving on. Let me do this again because my computer is not acting appropriate. So back from the beginning. Departures. The director may relax. So we changed that to, "The director may approve a departure from." And right here it says, "Should be strengthened beyond." We replaced that, "Exceed the minimum requirements." The next part talks about a new section that we added in there, dealing with certain uses as they relate to rideaway uses, large site footprints, existing construction, physical condition, topography issues, or geographic conditions prevent compliance or impose unusual hardship. Provided them design maximums, pedestrians, vehicular connectivity on the site, given the constraints. So that's just a way that we can depart from the standards, and that's kind of typical what you see in a lot of these things when there's site-related issues that you're allowed some discretion to depart away from that. We also, if you, if you look at where my cursor is, the B that was struck out, that was the section that basically replaced that. So it's pretty close. Moving on. Here we have a section that talks about more departure criteria. Legal felt and, and makers felt that A should be struck from this because basically it was only going to be on two roads that we have within the city, and it wasn't really going to provide us much benefit, and it was just intersection-related. So we ended up striking that, renumbering this. The new B talks about multi-building developments and additional ten percent of the frontage, lot frontage may be occupied by off-street parking and driveways provided design treatments beyond the minimum standards are included that successfully mitigate the visual impacts of parking areas on the street skate. Here you have the same thing, but this is in the landscaping section. We added that in there. Blank wall treatment. This is what I was talking about before. Seems that we have a now that's correct. It is correct. So everything right there is correct. We showed there, took out the large blank walls and added A, so that tightens it up a little bit. And then I think we're getting close to the end. There's the firewall section that we saw earlier. And last but not least, no, that's it.
I think that's it.
That's it. Any questions regarding these changes?
Does any commissioner wish to ask questions? Go ahead, Darren.
On, on page two there, Ryan, the language that you have says that there's, I think with the director, you can depart from the standard. The next time you showed depart, I think you showed like a ten percent. For the one on page two, is there a limitation to how much of a departure is available?
Page two, you said?
Yes.
Being page, are you talking about this one right here, Darren?
I guess so. On the bottom left, it says page two of eleven. So yeah, this is, yeah. Right there for B, "The director may approve a departure from the standards." Like a ten percent departure, a complete departure, they're not required. You previously used may waive, and in another section you used may approve a departure of ten percent. This one, it just says you can approve a departure. Is the intent to potentially waive the requirement altogether or put some confines on that?
No, if you look at the A above that, it talks about dimensional standards of the twenty-five percent. So you're not looking at the dimensional standards greater than that. What you're looking at is issues dealing with rideaway uses and all this other stuff right there. So it's just giving the director flexibility, and this is what legal thought would be the best thing to add into this. Because this is basically
So it should be also say up to twenty-five percent, is that what you're saying?
This already covers that in the first part.
Actually, Ryan, if I could chime in, A is actually a different thing. So that's just adjust the type and design of the vehicular connection. So A does not place a cap or a limit. It's, it's a little bit more open-ended, but it's where topography might be an impact. There might be a right-of-way of some sort, or there might be certain uses that require large-site building footprints that prevent compliance or imposing unusual hardship. So you know, on a lot of these, we thought, you know, sometimes we put in some percentages where we felt like a cap was needed. Here, we did not include one to allow the city some flexibility there. So really, the, the director holds the card in terms of, you know, it has to meet the overall intent, and they have to meet this criteria. But you're right, there's, you know, they could, the block size could be twice as big. There's a lot of flexibility there. But ultimately, the director kind of can hold the cards and kind of make a determination of what, how much is too much. But if the planning commission feels too uncomfortable by that, you know, you could definitely put some caps as to how far you can go on some of these. But you know, there, there is some for, you know, for some uses or some lot configurations, you know, it is good to offer some flexibility on these things. So it's kind of, you know, it's up to you. If you, if you think, you know, what I would suggest on this is if you consider adding a cap on it or something to say that, that I wouldn't do anything like ten percent. I would make it much bigger than that. I would say, you know, they can go, you know, twenty-five or fifty percent bigger than, than the standard if any of these conditions are present. You know, I saw, I would make it a little bit bigger to allow more flexibility if you want to go.
For even, for even more flexibility, could you add just some language that talks about a departure up to and equal to the limitations placed by the topography right-of-way and uses? So that if there is, like you mentioned, a long segment, then topography affects half of that. Well, then you can approve a departure from that half that is impacted by the topography without departing from the entire requirement. So you're just looking for the mitigation of that constraint.
It sounds, Darren, as if you'd like to limit the departure to resolving the immediate issue and not allowing a departure for the entire site.
Right, yeah, making it clear that that's the case. Thanks, Chair.
I would like to amend Darren's question a little bit and say, should we also not include an aesthetic component to the decision that the departure still needs to meet the aesthetics of the general area? So that we don't wind up with something that suddenly becomes an eyesore on an otherwise well-planned street.
So in addition.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
In addition to, so the departures must meet the applicable intent statement, and I'd have to go back and, and look at the master doc to see what the intent is. But so essentially, you're saying that the aesthetics, it must meet, there must be some aesthetics issue or criteria.
The street should continue to look like the rest of the street.
But isn't that the role of the director to make sure that the form-based code is followed for the aesthetics?
Yes.
And, and if there's going to be a departure, he's going to validate that that aesthetics is still going to be maintained. I don't, I don't feel it's a major point that what you're making.
And I'm good. I was just asking the question.
Well, and actually, that, that is part of the purpose statement. So I'm looking at eighteen thirty-one, two thirty under the purpose. It says to enhance the character and livability of downtown, to encourage compact and walkable development, to increase the convenience and enjoyment of walking downtown. So there's actually a typo there that we missed. It says walking and rolling. I think that's not supposed to say that, but any departure must have, must meet those purpose statements. So that, I think that already gets to your I think the code already has what you're mentioning in aesthetics there.
Okay, well, I didn't want to dilute from, from Darren's question, though. Yeah, I think Darren still wanted the departure to be limited to the immediate problem, not to the entire site. Is that correct, Karen?
That, that's correct.
So essentially, you're looking at some language. It would say, let's see, provided the proposed design treatment maximizes pedestrian and vehicular connectivity, and the departure granted is no greater than the something about the limitation. I'll have to think about the language there, but the departure is no greater than necessary, given the the site constraint.
Cannot exceed the extent of the condition. For which the departure is granted.
That makes sense.
Okay.
I'm going to interrupt for a moment and ask uh how the other planning commissioners feel about that. Does anyone disagree with that?
If that is the wording that's used, I'm in agreement.
Then Ryan, I think our motion would need to include that as well, correct? I I believe so. You can do that, or you can, you can. Make the motion based off of, you know, what the, what the changes are uh after being reviewed by legal counsel. Because they're going to go through it and if they have any changes, they're going to make them anyway. Okay, of course. Thank you. Bob, I assume, Bob, you wrote that down?
Yes, I did.
Okay, perfect. I'm going to stop sharing my screen because that's all of them. If anybody has any more questions regarding the items that I provided you this evening. Please let us know right now, otherwise we're going to move on. Seeing none, I will stop sharing my screen. That way Bob can share his screen again and continue with the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Find them right. Okay, from current slide. Are we, um, do we have the correct screen? Do we have the the presenter view or the uh your or the uh, do we have the correct view here? Okay.
No, you have, you have your version, Bob. You you don't have the presenter view on.
Okay. But you have the correct version, right?
No.
Oh, we don't. Okay, I need to swap settings. Okay. Okay, now is it correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So um I'll walk back through. Thank you for presenting those. Again, those were. Some things Madrona saw as ability to tighten up some of the language and had great comments and we. Ryan and and I had a good discussion uh back and forth on a number of those issues. So um thanks for bearing with us there. So um this, this just explains that we've split eighteen thirty-one into six different articles. Um, from purpose and applicability on through the design standards for. Block frontages, site planning and building design. And on the right there, you can. We made some notes regarding, you know, how big it changes. Are these mostly new? Uh, our mix of existing and new or completely new. Um, much of it's pretty new, so. Uh, the zoning, um, we actually didn't change the zoning map at all. Uh, so the map is the same. We did look at changing. Some of the zoning for those single-family subdivisions uh down in the south and the and the northeast, but that didn't get enough. Um, we didn't get a big enough response to continue with that change. So we. Kept it the way that it is, but the, but the use and the density and dimensional provisions have changed. Uh, largely in 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 all the zones to some extent. So. The one big thing that's changed in in some of the districts are the approaches to building height. So right now there's in um. I believe it's the town center zone has a maximum base height of seventy-five feet. Uh, and you have bonuses for four-area ratio extra. In fact, there's a, some limits to how much floor area. You can have with respect to the size of your site. What we did is we um. We we changed the bonus to be instead of floor ratio base to be height-based. And as a result of that, we reduced the maximum base height. So you can see there in town center zone where right now you had a seventy-five-foot height limit. We reduced it down to fifty-five, but then through a bonus, you can get back up to eighty-five feet. So you could actually go taller than you can currently. By jumping through some of the bonus hoops. And then what we did is we eliminated the density bonus provisions for four-area ratio. Because that was something that we thought was a little more complicated, that the height issue is a little bit more understandable. And and also one issue is that uh to date, no one had attempted to do a building taller than fifty-five feet. Um, so that's what the market was building to, at least up to this point. Uh, the other thing is we adjusted some of the bonus provisions for um and we. We pretty much flipped these over to getting extra height from getting extra floor area. And a number of these. Um. Are going to be automatically required, either that or like uh parking. Um. There were some bonuses for providing a parking garage or underground parking, largely to build. These tall buildings, you're going to have to build some underground parking anyways. So. We eliminated those and stuck with the the key ones like the the plaza spaces. Um, the lead platinum and lead gold certification. And then we also uh kept significant uh art element in public meeting rooms. And then uh we also added, um, we integrated uh water feature into the significant plaza option. Uh, the other thing that we did was there was a lot of um maximum density standards, a number of units per acre. And we eliminated those and let simply let the building height setbacks, parking requirements. Open space um and the market uh be more dictate what the density is. In the zones and that would provide more flexibility um in the town center and and the other zones as well. The other part of it is that the existing code discourages single-purpose residential development and we were a little bit more intentional. As to where it would be allowed and where it wouldn't be allowed. Um. So Article three deals with street types and circulation. Um, you can see that the old map, we made some tweaks to where. Uh, new, for the most part, it's pretty similar uh where new streets and new connections would go. Uh, and the one thing that we added was mid-block connection. So pedestrian. Or mixed pedestrian vehicular connections. So on the right map, you can see some orange dash lines. That's a really important aspect. Of the new code and try to make it more pedestrian-friendly. So you can see here's a little zoom-in map. Uh, near the, over the el- former elementary school site. Um, we use the same street for street types, but we made some tweaks to the standards for those. Um, on this map, we also distinguish between what roads are existing versus which ones are proposed. Um. And we also show where the regional trails are proposed to make sure that that's truly integrated into this whole concept. And now um also wanted to show you how we had a discussion on June seventeenth. We made a few tweaks because the 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 site that's largely highlighted in yellow here. Uh, that there's a development proposal for that site and um. There was a requirement that two seventy-seventh street be connected. And uh, we were looking at that option and the and the proposed development there was looking at. Rather making that more of an internal pedestrian connection rather than a street connection. And we had a good discussion about that and ultimately uh it was agreed to change that to a through-block connection. And so that's shown on the map at the right. And then these are simply the optional designs for those through-block connections. You can do. A Wooner, which is a shared vehicular pedestrian uh passageway or a landscape passageway. Or more of the urbanized downtown passageway on the lower right there. Uh, now in a few slides about the design standards that start with the block frontages. Uh, so you can see here on the right are the maps and the different colors uh tell you what. Uh, standards and options there are. So starting with the red, uh, the red ones are where storefronts are required. Um, the the green are where you have to have a landscape setback. And then the purple are where there are choices if you could do either uh either or. I'll just keep going from here. And then one other change that we made at the last meeting for that same site. Uh, was two hundred and seventy-sixth street uh where we had previously shown that to be a landscape street. And the development proposal there was was trying to do a storefront with mixed use. That would not have been allowed under this proposal. And the planning commission agreed to make the change to purple to show it as mixed, which allows for the option. On two hundred and seventy-sixth street and that would essentially allow the storefront design that they were um trying to do on that site. And the other thing with that is that that proposed concept had a twenty-five-foot-deep retail s- uh space depth there. The uh, the standards for uh the street type here for mix actually require thirty, but then have some departure provisions. And um, the planning commission agreed to uh strike the. The language that's underlined in in red there, which will allow a little bit more flexibility. Uh, to do the twenty-five-foot-deep storefront depth on that space. So the formerly that red line that um. Would limit it, limit the reductions for departure on only up to twenty-five percent. And that would have prohibited the design that they were proposing. So with the new change. That allows more flexibility for them to do the type of space that they were looking at. A few other things on here. Uh, one of the bigger changes was some changes to the updated uh public space standards. Uh, with a lot of emphasis on the design of those public spaces. Um, and then also residential amenity space. So there's quite a bit. Uh, that's been updated there that really focuses on the quality of those spaces. Um. And has some dimensional standards, for instance, about the width of the space related to the height of the buildings along the spaces. Uh, there are a number of relatively minor off-street parking standard changes. Um. Not huge. Uh, we did add some uh updated electrical vehicle parking standards, some new bicycle parking standards. Um, there's some adjusted maximum requirements. Uh, and it also some adjustments to um. Uh, developers may request uh providing parking above or below those. Uh, requirements uh in exchange for parking study. And then uh we also tackled uh building massing and articulation was a big deal. And so we have some. Uh, kind of a toolbox approach to standards there uh that integrate clear minimum standards, but allow some of those departures. For strategic flexibility. So the, the graphic to your lower right kind of shows an example where you would. Articulate your facade every about thirty to sixty feet. Um, and you can, there's a number of different options you can choose, but. The example here shows uh using awnings, roofline modulation, uh different uh materials or window treatments. To help break up the facade and meet the requirements. And then also what we did is for very long buildings, we added some additional. Facade massing requirements uh to add visual interest and break down the scale of these really, really big buildings. And so with that, I think Lisa's here. She'll go through uh some of the slides on the SEPA infill exemption and multifamily tax exemption. Lisa?
Thanks, Bob. So the first section covers the infill exemption and it is a tool under the State Environmental Policy Act. That act is about um considering the implications to the natural and built environment from. Uh, development, but also plans, policies and regs. So an infill exemption is where the city does the work ahead of time, um identifies the potential growth. Um. And focuses, uh, in particular, it's meant for um multifamily or mixed-use development. Um, but it must be consistent with city plans and it needs to be consistent with um adopted codes, which would include this. New form-based code and anything else that the city applies to new development. And uh because the city has put a lot of attention to its regulations over the years and has transportation concurrency and critical areas. Regulations and things like that. Um, SEPA as a process um becomes redundant or unnecessary. Um, so it can reduce the cost. Go to the next slide. Thank you. Um, so the infill exemption code would amend chapter sixteen point one of the Covington Municipal Code. It would apply um just to the zones listed there in the downtown, general commercial, mixed commercial, MHO and town center. So as I mentioned, what would be exempt is residential development. Um, that would be anything above the exemption level that the city already allows. Um, mixed-use development. And then there's a small allowance for commercial development. Up to sixty-five thousand square feet. So that would be things like office, but it does not include retail. One thing to point out, um, is that these exemptions do not apply if the land is. Covered by water, so streams or wetlands. Or if someone comes in asking for rezoned, then the infill exemption wouldn't apply because the whole intent is that. The exemption applied to development that's consistent with the plans and code. Next slide, thank you. Um, so the existing SEPA exemptions are listed there at the top. Those are already exempt from SEPA. They're not exempt from other city requirements. Um, but that would be nine or fewer, single-family dwellings, sixty or fewer, multifamily in three of the four um zones in downtown plus R eighteen. And then there's a other aspects of development. So what would happen here with the proposed amendments is it would add in. Um, the TC zone um to them. Exemption levels and it would um change the exemption so that it is for any multifamily or any mixed use. In the sixty-five thousand square feet. So the ordinance um has the development levels that have been studied in the EIS and it refers to. Trans necessary transportation improvements and all the other codes would would also still apply. The other aspect we took a look at was multifamily housing tax exemption. Um, which has been in place in the city since twenty twelve. It is also a tool designed to encourage multifamily and provide affordable housing. Uh, I put a note in here. Uh, this was a subject of discussion at your last meeting. There's an extensive section in the code that. Talks about if if those proposals are not meeting the requirements um for. The development, um, the city can cancel that tax exemption. They don't need to wait for the annual report that is due from the. Development. Uh, one thing we did add in response to the planning commission was a definition of supportive services. So that's in the lower right there. And uh otherwise it would still uh apply a couple of additional standards. So the eight-year exemption is for. Uh, market rate and twelve-year is for affordable. Either way, both would be subject to green building requirements. And then for affordable housing, we've reduced it um from a possible hundred percent share of affordable housing. To um having at least twenty, but not more than thirty percent unless they provide supportive services, then they can go to forty percent. And this is just a note, um, that the city will be coming back to address some recent legislative changes that went into effect or will be in effect. Um, before the end of the month, um, in the state law, um, but there's some other things the city will come back to. That are not part of what we're doing here. So in terms of future land use map changes, um, this would affect the comprehensive plan. Um, in red is the civic campus. In the comprehensive plan today, it is identified as a park. Recreation facility and school. And it was formerly a school, but now it's in city ownership and the idea is for mixed-use development. So the comprehensive plan map would change to show it as downtown. And on the other hand, Soco Park, which is um east of or south of uh Wax Road. Uh, where the city has purchased land for park or trail purposes, those would become the green um parks. Designation on the comp plan. Like Bob mentioned, the underlying zoning does not need to change, um, but the comprehensive plan map would change.
Okay, that wraps up our presentation. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Ryan, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I don't, Mr. Chairman. Um, the planning commissioners can choose either to ask questions now or we can go through uh, the public hearing portion of this uh, process. And then the planning commissioners can ask questions and deliberate.
I'm gonna go ahead and take questions from the public and then we'll go through the commissioners. Unless some commissioner has a strong objection to that one. Okay, so if you wish to speak during the public hearing, please raise your hand. I remind you of your, that if you're on the phone, and we have several phone-in callers uh, that you need to desk to dial star nine to raise your hand. Please go ahead and raise your hand if you wish to speak during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Once again, if you wish to speak during the public hearing portion of the meeting, please raise your hand. Ryan, I see no one with raised hands. Do you concur?
I recommend asking one more time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, folks, we are in the public hearing portion of the meeting. If you're on the phone and you wish to speak, please raise your hand by dialing star nine. If you're in Zoom, there is, there is obviously a raise hand icon that you can use. Please, if you wish to speak, raise your hand now. Ryan, I still see no hands raised. You concur?
I concur.
Right, I clear the floor closed for public comment, and I will move on to the commissioners' comments. And questions, commissioners? Go ahead, Darren.
A general question on the building height. I noticed you allow for the bonuses to be measured in stories. But yet everything else is measured in in height. In addition, for the commercial ground floor, there's a thirteen-foot minimum requirement. Just kind of in practice, in my experience, I've noticed there's a difference in adding a height versus adding a number of stories going from fifty-five feet to eighty-five feet. Well, is there a way to maybe standardize what the actual bonuses give you? Does, in general, does the commission have a preference on how many stories a building is? Is eighty-five feet, you know? Can we really perceive what the difference between eighty-five or fifty-five or eighty-seven? Is there a way to set all of the height, at least for this area, into a number of stories as opposed to, because of that thirteen-foot minimum on the commercial, I've I've run into an example where that that gets a little tricky because you might be a half a foot off of the eighty-five, but yet you really want, I don't know, seven stories. You just can't make it work. So general question of, is there a way to set the height for this in a number of stories as opposed to a foot maximum?
I assume that's a question for us rather than for other planning commissioners?
Yeah, question to you.
Want to know the answer?
So um, oftentimes I like to just use height is is the easier one to measure because stories obviously can be, you know, you can have tall stories or or not tall stories. An office story is gonna be a lot taller than a residential story. Uh, retail story is obvious thirteen feet minimum. So that's where, you know, if you're truly looking at form-based, uh, the the feet, the number of feet kind of mixes with that pretty good. But where there's, in some communities, we've had a combination of both. I think in Mount Lake Terrace, we did both. So we said something like eighty-five feet, no more than seven stories or something like that. So uh, we combined those because there was an interest in doing that. With here, um, just kind of looking at, um, trying to split my screen here and look at the, look at the draft. So you've got eighty-five feet in the town center. So generally, our thought is that you you've got thirteen feet for the ground floor where you're required to have commercial. And that allows you, you generally wanna wanna allow for ten feet per floor generally. Uh, you know, office might be slight, might be a little bigger, but I don't expect you're probably gonna get all that many big, tall office buildings, if any at all. So, but ten feet per floor is probably more than enough for residential. So uh, given, you know, that's where I think having the floor heights ending with the at at with the fives rather than the even work pretty well, um, for the most part, and add some flexibility there. But if there's an interest, like I said, if there's an interest in having a combination, that could work well if you wanted to refer to, if you wanted to limit it to a certain number of floors or make sure that you at least get a minimum number of floors. Those could be options that you could look at, but this was simply our first, our first stab, and no one else has, no one else had brought it up to this point.
That, it, so in your opinion, then also with that opportunity for a significant public plaza, right? You can get a bonus of two stories.
Yes.
If, if we're trying to encourage the development of the form and we want the plaza, we want to give you the bonus, but for whatever reason, the stories below, like you said, there's a, there can be a difference as far as how tall they are. What if that means they can't get actual two stories, but they did the thing that we're asking them to provide?
Well, there's more than enough space here, so
Okay.
there's between fifty-five feet and eighty-five feet between the base and the max. There's thirty feet, which is more than enough to get you two stories in there.
And it's if, well, if it's a public plaza, it's LEED certified, they have an art element, and they provide a public meeting room.
Yeah, so they can get, uh, I guess they could get the potential for up to three stories. Um, given there's thirty feet and you have, you could say ten foot for a floor, you can get all the way up to eighty-five feet, so you'd have to essentially get, um, you'd have to get two of these features. So you'd have to get the plaza plus one of these other features to really be able to get you up there, that height. So these would allow you an extra floor above the fifty-five-foot height. So if you're, on the other hand, if your floors are twelve feet high, you can only get two. Um, because you can't go over eighty-five feet. So you can get the extra floor to get you over fifty-five in the town center. But if your floors are more than, if your floors are ten feet or less, you can get three. If your floors are more than ten, then you can only get two, to then that kind of caps you out. You can't go beyond beyond eighty-five feet, does that make sense?
It sounds as if you're saying that the maximum height is eighty-five feet, no matter how many floors you're allowed.
Yes, that's correct.
Does that address your concern, Darren?
But yes, for the purposes of this, uh, it does. Um, just to clarify though, it's been, it's an issue that I've seen get dealt with way too often unnecessarily, where somebody comes in with a grand design and they provide everything that you want, but because of a hard fixed number, you're off, you know, you want it to be eighty-seven feet in order to provide everything, but you can't because, well, you're gonna have to shrink this. Well, we advertise our building to provide twelve-foot ceilings. Sorry, you can't do it because, or you can, you could remove the public plaza and then you can shave two stories off. You could save money on having to do the public plaza, but we want the public plaza. So just philosophically, why would we limit you to a hard fixed height number when it's the the story bonus that we're really after? I think you could cap it and say, don't do twenty-foot, you know, maximum of twelve-foot stories or something. But I remember renting an apartment that had a sales pitch of twelve-foot ceilings. Like, it seemed, seemed like an option, an added option when you were trying to buy that or buy into that uh, building. But I don't want us to limit that from being an option because we just picked a number as opposed to allowing for three extra stories.
Yeah, I see your point.
Well, isn't there provision where uh, the director can actually make a deviation as well? Am I misunderstanding?
No, there's not a de- deviation like right now, I think there are deviations, uh, kind of like that. Um, I guess what, what, you know, a potential way to look at it is to say, um, eighty, like you could say in the town center, eighty-five feet or no more than three uh, additional bonus floors. So that would allow you to go above eighty-five feet if your floors were twelve feet. Uh, you know, heck, your floors could be sixteen feet. Um, but that would cap it at three floors and allow you to get the three floors. What you would probably say in the MC zone, because it's only ten feet higher, really the intent is one extra floor. So you could say in the MC zone, sixty-five feet or no more than one bonus floor. So that would be a way of allowing you a little bit of flexibility with the eighty-five and the sixty-five. And you know, the GC would say fifty-five or no more than two bonus floors. Would that, would that be more uh, to your liking?
For, yeah, for me personally, I I like that. And again, maybe there's a maximum for that to say the floor should be no greater than sixteen or twenty or fifty feet. I, you know, I I think, yeah, Bob, I believe you have some architecture in your background. You could give us a good recommendation at at that height, what would be a, what'd be a reasonable floor uh, maximum? But I I would encourage trying to maybe move to that standard.
Yeah, I would probably, just for simplicity sake, I would, I would say for those floors, no more, more than fifteen feet per floor.
Yeah, that, thank you, that's, that's what I would advocate for.
I have two questions regarding Darren's comments. Uh, Darren, would it be okay if we addressed that with a revision after tonight with, or do you feel like we need to address it tonight?
Uh, I don't, uh, I don't have any, nothing that I know from Ryan's sharing of of status of projects. I don't think anybody's beaten down the door that would lose out on something like this. So good point, we could do this later or even have a different discussion. But um, I I just appreciate the comments Bob provided of of how to get there and and working through this kind of mental exercise. But yeah, I don't know that we'd need it done tonight.
The other question would be how all the other commissioners feel about that?
Jonathan, can I add something in there real quick?
Yes, please.
From a professional standpoint, I agree with Darren and his approach. And I think that is something that we should definitely look at. Um, are we prepared to do that tonight by adding those numbers in there? That's something that we haven't really explored yet. Um, Bob, how comfortable are you with adding uh, some provisions in there if the the planning commission would like to see those added?
I'm comfortable.
Okay. So if if the planning commission agrees to add those provisions in there, uh, they would need to uh, make a motion, you know, whether it's at the end of this or whether it's right now to add those and then we can move on or we can just come back to it at a later date and rehash this.
Is anyone not okay with coming back to this at a, at a later date? It's okay to say that you're not.
I'm okay with coming into a later date.
Okay, does anybody disagree with that position? Please speak up. Okay, so Ryan, can we add a future agenda item for us to revisit this and, you know, at a hearing in a couple of months? When you have revised the language?
What we can do is, it would, it would be beneficial to do it tonight instead of having to go back and rehashing this and bringing it back. Uh, the reason, reason being is that once, once we complete this project, this work item for the work plan is done. And having to come back is basically like going back and doing the tree code again. So opening it back up for uh, debate and for all that might be, might be nice, but it didn't, at the long run, it might actually be better just to do it tonight.
Okay, uh, Bob, go ahead, go ahead, David.
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay.
Based on that. Train of thought.
I am too. I feel like if we want to make this change, let's do it now.
Okay.
Agreed.
Just so you know, we're talking about an amendment to the draft motion. We're gonna have to make sure we capture that carefully in the motion if we move, if we moved or if we recommend for approval tonight.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I just still think that'll be easier in the long run.
I'm fine with that. I'm gonna need some kind of draft language so that we can have a nice, clean motion.
Bob, can you provide that to uh, to Jonathan via the, a chat?
Yeah, you can, uh, yeah, I already have a motion.
Working on it.
Okay, uh, Darren, did you have any other comments?
Oh, sir, just that one.
Okay, uh, going around the room, David, did you have any comments?
Actually, I've gone through this material at least three times, uh, other than the new stuff today. And um, I do not have any additional questions. And uh, I uh, I'm, I'm complete.
Jennifer, do you have any comments?
Just a point of clarification before we move on to Jennifer Gilbert Smith. Um, I spoke with uh, some interesting members of our planning department earlier today regarding some of the definitions that are already in the code and how they are laid out in the code. And certain, certain words were capitalized where they shouldn't have been and certain words were not capitalized where they should have been. So that's more or less just cleaning up little minor nuances. Nothing of substance was changed, just words were capitalized and words were made, so they're not capitalized. So I just wanted to let the planning commission know for the record that the draft that will go towards city council, if the planning commission approves it, will have like seven minor changes in the definition section, just changing the capitalization of words.
I assume that would follow the definition of Scrivener's errors.
Correct.
Okay, uh, Jennifer, do you have any comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, do you have any comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Uh, Joe, do you have any comments?
Uh, remind me again, who, uh, who are the government agencies that these uh, multifamily tax incentives would be giving? Are those taxes paid to the city, to the county, or whose taxes are we talking about, those incentives?
They're taxes on um, the uh, development. Um, and I believe, let me look it up. Um, I believe uh, they they still pay the taxes on the land, but not on the improvements. I'll double check that.
To the county?
Yes.
Okay. And a portion of those taxes go, would then derive to the city because of?
Right, for the period of time that they would, um, eight or twelve years, um, they would pay less tax um, until the end of that period, provided they meet all the standards.
So for I just remember last meeting, we had a lot of discussion about that eight and twelve-year uh, timeframe and 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 uh, generate, generating of the income for the city over that much time.
Is there a question there, Joe?
No, I just wanted to clarify that if if we're still comfortable with uh, with that exemption, then I'm fine with it if everybody else is. with that exemption, then I'm fine with it if everybody else is.
Okay, just a point of clarification on that council member or commissioner, excuse me. Um, we did take a look at the, the current status of nonprofit organizations or housing developments that are currently receiving a reduced uh, tax based on their designation. Uh, I believe, I believe all religious institutions within the city are exempt, obviously. Uh, but there are three that I found under the King County Assessor's Office that have some sort of uh, tax incentive for multifamily. That's affinity in Polaris, and there is one other uh, which is a, a senior housing. Uh, now those, those tax exemptions are only good, like Lisa said, for a number of years and then they expire. For instance, there's a senior housing exempt, there's a senior housing that has point nine seven percent uh, exemption, but they have a commercial aspect inside it that they pay taxes on. So once that expires, then they'll have to go forward and, and pay the normal tax rate.
Joe, anything else?
Uh, no, that's all, thank you.
One moment, and I will resume, I'm doing something. Okay, I have three things. The first and uh, the first is that on page one twenty nine. Uh, that would be one twenty-nine of the draft, draft form base code. That's eighteen thirty-one, two four zero eight D. I never thought of Covington as a place with dark alleys, but I don't see anything here that specifies lighting for those alleyways. It could be that the Covington Design and Construction Standards cover that. Uh, if so, then I have nothing else to say. Ryan, is that true?
That's something I'm gonna have to take a look at, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm trying to figure out exactly what page you're looking at.
It says at the bottom, one two eight, I apologize.
Okay, that makes sense.
However, my PDF reader thinks it's page one twenty-nine.
Yep. So I believe we require some lighting or Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, for, you know, areas within, in the town center. Uh, or excuse me, within the downtown. I'm not necessarily sure if it's within the designing construction standards, but just so everybody knows, the designing construction standards are in the process of being updated and they'll be going to uh, city council here within the next month. Uh, so that may, that may be in there.
Yeah, there is a, there's a whole chapter or section on lighting and I have to, um, I think we largely kept lighting in, in public right of ways a little bit different than uh, on private sites. Um, but I'm just kind of scanning through it. But I would think that, um, just like if, if an alley is within a right of way, just like within streets, usually the lighting at least for streets is handled, um, it would probably be handled in those construction standards, but for alleys, um, I mean, I don't believe there's any alleys currently, um. But I think they would have to meet this uh, eighteen thirty-one, four seventy for any new development with lightings, with, with, that would have an alley.
Would, would behind Safeway be considered an alley or behind Party City? I mean, it's like, only, only one side of it is really an alley, but.
Uh, technically, it probably is not an alley because an alley usually is just a um, separate right of way. We'll have to see.
Work back there at night, so.
Yeah, and if they built that under this code, they would have to meet this section four seventy. So we've got some general standards. For outdoor lighting, height.
My second, my second point is probably my biggest one. Ryan and I had a pretty detailed conversation a few minutes before the meeting, maybe twenty or thirty minutes. I'm gonna give a little example, so bear with me for a moment. I know many of you go through Hennings Roundabout on a daily basis, and I will tell you that Covington Rotary has been cleaning up Hennings Roundabout with some regularity. It was cleaned less than a month ago.
What street?
Uh, Hennings Roundabout by Fred Meyer and the old woman.
Got it.
It was cleaned less than a month ago. It was spotless. It remained that way for less than a week. It now looks like a dump truck full of litter was dumped in the area. There are no, there are no trashcans in the area, and there's nothing in this form-based code that requires developers to include trashcans in pedestrian areas.
So you think it's pedestrians, not people throwing stuff from their car?
I think a large part of it is pedestrians.
It very well could be, um, but with, with that location a roundabout is more or less likely to be caused by people throwing stuff out of their car or things blowing out of their back of their trucks or stuff like that. But I do get your point, uh, Mr. Chairman, about having some type of uh, garbage uh, stations or something throughout the uh, the downtown or a requirement for that. And uh, you know, if, if, if Bob can find out an area within the code where it would probably fit, um, that might be something that we could, we could add to that and draft the language to bring the city council unless, unless Bob has any other suggestions.
I would suggest.
I have a question, uh, for example, over by Starbucks across from Petco today, there is a garbage can outside of Starbucks. I'm not sure if that's Starbucks garbage can or that's a garbage can provided by the developer of that strip mall.
And you will find that many businesses actually provide an exterior garbage can.
So is it, is it something we need to require a business to do or the person who owns the strip mall to do? Um, and then who's responsible for dumping that?
Well, I was going to suggest to the commission that we add a requirement for the uh, development to provide and maintain a service trash receptacle along pedestrian pathway, pathways. However, obviously that has to pass the vote of the commission. So I'd like to see how the commissioners feel about that. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, what I would say is usually this type of standard and this level of detail is handled in the the city's construction and engineering standards. You know, they get into curb heights and, and all those details. Um, but that's not to say that you couldn't put it in the standards, probably because you're gonna want trash receptacles in the right of way itself, but you also want them on private property along the uh, pathways and walkways. And so I imagine that usually in the construction standards might have standards for like drinking fountains and every so often. Um, so I would almost say that if, if you're updating the uh, construction standards, that that might be a good place to put it, but ultimately you're making the recommendation here. So if you feel more strongly that it should be in, in code, that's an option too.
Well, let's see how the commissioners feel. Does anybody strongly agree with me or strongly disagree with me or somewhere in between?
I would be curious what um, other cities do. Uh, obviously, I saw that garbage can and used it today. I've used it before. Um, I do have, as I'm required to do by Washington state law, I do have a garbage bag in my car. But this just happened to be right where my next drink was gonna go, so it was convenient to get rid of it at that moment. Um, but it is nice, you know, to have a garbage can, maybe when you're walking into a store to drop something in. If you've got something in your car you want to get rid of. So um, I like the idea of having him.
I've, I've got a point. I, on the form-based code, it has an identification of how you put structures in front of your dumpsters and everything else to make sure that they are obscured from everybody seeing it and it makes it look very, very nice. I think we're going a little bit too far by identifying, you know, where we're going to be dumping our trash along a, a roundabout. I, I just don't think that is appropriate for a visibility and, and functionality. I think that, that um, it doesn't fit my definition of form-based code. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Anybody else?
I, I agree with Jonathan. Uh, you can drive through a place like uh, the Home Depot area and you can look all over there for a trash can and not find one. Uh, and I ask myself, well, who's responsible? Put it out, the, the businesses or the city or the developer, who? The, the, the point is there are just very few receptacles like that around uh, any place you shop in Covington. You, you can, uh, I don't know, uh, when businesses close down because of COVID, they tuck out all their trash cans or what, but you, it's very difficult to find trash, trash receptacles a, around, around Covington. So I do think if something needs to be addressed.
Would the code, okay, well, that's great that some people read, um, let's talk to Jennifer and Darren, see how they feel.
I'm definitely a fan of trash cans, but I guess my question is, I, and I think that this is probably the issue and, and this is where I think it might be beyond the scope of our meeting today, because I think probably the real issue is who's responsible for maintaining the trash can, right, and emptying and putting a new bag in. So that's where um, I can understand why maybe there's less trash cans. But I'm a fan of them, so I guess I would leave it up to Bob and Ryan, the professionals here. What, what do they really think is best? Because it does sound like a few of us would like to see more trash cans, but at the same time, I don't want to be overstepping or overcomplicating things either. That, I guess that's where I stand.
Darren, anything to add?
Uh, I, I think the idea is, is definitely well-intended and, and a pretty good one. My opinion, I think there's an opportunity for a city. Often you'll require trash enclosures and part of that is um, mandatory pickup. Uh, you, you know, you require the business to actually dispose of their trash. Putting a similar requirement in a pedestrian realm when you're trying to promote walking seems like a logical next step. I'm not aware of many places requiring that, but it, it definitely helps reduce the appearance of disrepair for any facility, especially in the areas of town that we're talking about this evening. Just, I don't know, similar to others, I, I don't, I don't know the scope for tonight. I don't know how to add that. I just, I like the idea of that. Um, maybe get to incorporate that in a discussion more in my day job even to, to just see where does it go, but um, I'm not sure how to do that this evening, other than requiring something in a pedestrian realm. And once you do, it becomes more of a public requirement than a business requirement, so. So that, threading that needle is just something I, I don't, I don't know how to do it, but I love the idea.
Let's give uh, Ryan a chance to address it. Would it be better in the, the construction design standards or would it be better in the form-based code, Ryan?
I'm looking through the construction design standards right now as they have them. And there, there is, there is a detail for trash receptacle, but I'm trying to find where in the actual standards that they reference that. So that's, that's what I'm looking at right now. So bear with me a moment, uh, if, if I, we can continue talking, other things, and I can come back and provide you some information.
I mean, I'm more than willing, I'm more than willing for this to not be included in the form-based code. I do think it's something that the city should address.
And, and we, we could, we could talk about that as potentially becoming a, a work plan item. Uh, there may be other places within the code that requires it. And I'm just trying to take a look at that really quickly to see if it's, it's in there at all.
I, I did prepare a draft amendment, and I will put that in the chat for everyone to read. If you're okay with that, we could go ahead and include it tonight. Um, and it is in the chat. If you're okay with that, I'm, I'm okay with mov- moving forward with that tonight, but I'm also okay with Ryan saying that they will handle it via the designing, construction and design standards. Don't die, I, I prepped.
So, so just taking a look at this, I'm not, I'm not finding it right off the bat, but there are, there are stuff. There are items in the design and construction standards that deal with, for instance, the placey, the mailboxes. So uh, it may be something to take a look at. Uh, bear with me while I look at this, please, you know, feel free to talk about other things and I'll, I'll uh, keep looking through this.
Okay, so uh, I'll move on from that question. I'll let the commissioners ponder and we can come back to it when, if we decide to make a motion. Um, I am pleased to see that we're no longer expecting to see the Tour de France at the hotels. I noticed the bike rear, bike requirement for the hotels has dropped from eight per ten rooms to three per ten rooms. That seems a much more reasonable number. I was wondering if the Tour de France was coming through. Um, beyond that, uh, one more thing I want to discuss was should we allow only one supportive service if a uh, multifamily development is uh, getting a tax exemption and only providing to get up to forty percent of affordable units, or should we require more supportive services than one?
Lisa, maybe speak to that.
Um, these uh, changes that we're proposing to the MFT are um, more restrictive than your current code by requiring green um, uh, green lead, uh, silver and um, by requiring supportive services um, and limiting the number of affordable to forty percent. It's your policy choice. Um, we were trying to shape the requirements to um, respond to what we were hearing were uh, limitations of the earlier approved developments with the tax exemptions. So it is your choice. Um, if you want to say a minimum of two instead of a minimum of one, I just wanted to put context that altogether, these are being more restrictive. Um, customized uh, standards for Covington.
How do they compare to other cities or?
Um, of the ones that we reviewed, there's uh, two others that require the lead certification. One is a lead silver and the other is just lead. Um, Lacy also has a limitation on the percent that can be affordable. Um, they don't have the same requirement for supportive services. That is, that you would be unique in that regard. Um, we were thinking of the senior and the affordable housing that did receive that tax exemption. Um, I believe Polaris um, was the name. And it appeared, you know, they were built on the edge of downtown away from some of the services and it didn't, those developments didn't have um, as much onsite supportive like for the seniors or for uh, job training or whatever might be the right um, set of services. So we customized this for you, and so I think um, because we were kind of scaling back on the percentage of affordable. Um, we were just, we were thinking a minimum of one. You could do a minimum of two. Um, it, it's, the definition that we provided is pretty open-ended, so it could be daycare. Um, it could be job training, it could be um, counseling, it could be a variety of things. It's dependent on who the population is.
But I guess it kind of sounds like if we were to change the minimum from one to two, that that would be more challenging.
It could be.
It could also be, um, the minimum could increase based on the size of the development if we wanted it to do so. If you're talking about three hundred units and they want to go to forty percent affordable, that's a much bigger demand for services than fifty units.
Right, you could, you could scale it to the number of units. Um, Ryan, remind me, I think the two, the senior and the affordable were several hundred units, right? Half and half.
Correct.
Up to 600 units altogether between the two, senior and affordable?
I would, I would say it's close to that number. It may not be that exact number, but it's fairly close. And they've been in the number a year, so I'm not entirely sure how much longer that's going to be around.
Right, so you could say for every 150, something like that. You know, if, if this had been in place, Ryan, I don't know if the two, I think the two applications were separate, right? They were just under review around the same time. You know, it would have been ideal that the senior housing would have had, you know, independent living or physical therapy or some kind of service for, for the seniors. And then for, for the affordable could have been childcare or, you know, classes or some other kind of thing that would, ideally, it's meant to match the needs of who's moving in.
So what would be inappropriate?
It sounds awfully subjective as to what are supportive services. Does that mean they have to dedicate a certain amount of physical space for a program like workout center or something? Or does it just mean they have to say, well, we offer counseling services to anyone who wants them? And that's, what is a supportive service? And how, how long is it maintained? And how is it sustained?
Well, it has to be maintained for the life of the tax exemption. That's one thing. So why don't I pull up the definition? Let me see if I can share a screen here. So we added the definition that is underlined at the bottom of the, of the page here. I'll zoom in a bit. So offering residents skills or aids for daily living, including job training, childcare, education, health, counseling, independent living, peer support and similar. And then in the actual language of the requirement, here they, they have to, it's, it's similar language, but it's saying you can go up to 40% instead of the 20 or 30% if you provide supportive services. So we don't say the size, but we do say that they have to demonstrate they've consulted with a nonprofit or public agency to dine, design the space suited to the proposed services. So it's not just up to them, and they do have to submit some material that shows that it is relevant and and based on, you know, a professional who provides similar services.
My understanding is that the intent of this section is for those affordable housing units to provide assistance to people who might be on limited income. They have limited skill sets. They have other challenges. And if we are going to demand services for this increase in that population, that we, those services must be intended to help those people better their situation.
That is the intent behind supportive services, yes.
With that in mind, if we're going to increase the size of that population, there's probably a bigger need for supportive services. That's why I'm asking the question.
So right now it's a minimum of one. We could say to the sentence that has demonstrated they've consulted, we could say consulted and sized for the number of residents. So that it, it has some kind of reference to size, and it's still subject to city approval.
So how does the rest of the planning commission feel about this? Again, I don't want to be the only one saying, let's do this. And obviously, if there's no votes for it, we can't make the amendment.
I have a question on that. Does putting something like this in our code make us look hard as a city? Make us look hard to work with to developers?
Well, I think something we talked about last time, it does, it does probably limit the number of applications you might get for this tax exemption for the 12-year. But Ryan, I think, pointed out last time, you have another development that's 100% affordable that did not request this tax exemption. So it's, it's not that they couldn't do it. Otherwise, it's just in order to get this particular tax exemption, the city would be adding a requirement. Ryan, can you talk a little bit about that project?
Right, Station by Vintage is under construction right now on the corner of Wax Road and Covington Way Southeast. I believe it's 189, 198 units. Correct me if I'm wrong, but they are 100% affordable. That's, that's their, that's their market. So what they did is they, they received a tax break through the state, and they opted not to go through the city's multifamily tax exemption.
Okay. So it's a choice?
It is a choice. There's other ways to go around it besides going through this. And quite frankly, you're going to see, like, who knows what we're going to have in the future? We also have to remember that, you know, when we do plans like the form-based code and the downtown plan, we're not looking at tomorrow. We're looking in the future. And, and who knows what's going to happen in downtown? We could have a lot of mixed-use development. We could have, you know, 85-foot-tall, seven-story buildings. Who knows? We'll have to see what happens in the future. But right now, what we see for the demand coming in is we have one Station by Vintage, which is going to come online next year. We have Polaris, we have Affinity, and we have a, another proposal that has come in on the, or not, has not come in officially, but it is coming in on the property adjacent to the old school site.
There, so I think it is possible you'll limit how many come, you know, to this particular incentive. But you will be revisiting this code to respond to the state law. There will be some expanded tax exemptions for ownership housing that were not allowed in the law up until this point. And that's changed, and there's some other parameters that are changed. So you'll be able to take a look at it, and you can always look at it in the future. But this seemed to be a way to address what we were seeing was a concern about the developments that had used this in the past.
So Lisa was saying, you know, this was, this was a, a, a quick alteration of the code based on what we could change now. There are other changes that come out that we're going to have to address at a later time dealing with this, with this chapter. So it may be prudent to address those changes later. Am I correct, Lisa?
Right, yes, we're not proposing to address all of the provisions that came in through the state law. They're not even quite in effect for another couple of weeks, and they just are more intense. This was meant to address some things we had understood about concerns about the implementation of development in the downtown. So we wanted to ensure good quality for the developments, for the residents that would be on the sites. There's other provisions where we're encouraging both market rate and affordable units in the code. You know, the infill exemption is one that any type of development could use. So I think we're just trying to calibrate, I guess I would say right now, the proposals for affordable. And like Brian said, you can take a little deeper dive into this code when, when responding to the newer state law.
I'm good with coming back to this later when we have to revisit it.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to raise my concern that if someone comes in and they want to build 400 apartments and they want a 40% exemption, you're adding 160 families in need of service to the city. And that's, is that one service going to be enough was my concern.
I would say, I think that some of those supporting services would be, almost be a given by the type of development. If you're, if you're building a building for seniors or for affordable housing, I think you would already be thinking about program-wise and incorporating some of those services anyhow. So I don't see where it's going to make a big overwhelming demand on, on somebody to provide those services. But I, I agree with Jonathan. I'm willing to revisit that later when we, I thank you, Lisa, for pointing out that, that new line in there about having to dedicate space and consult with some other agency about it. I think that's a little bit of a safeguard. I like that.
Can I ask a clarifying question? If, if they provide 20% of their units as affordable, they already get the exemption.
Right, that's the minimum standard in the state law. The current state law or the future one?
Right, but once you get the exemption, you get the exemption. So providing 40 doesn't get you more of an exemption. Once you earn it at 20, you've earned it.
20% of the, the units can be, if, if you provide 20% of the units as affordable,
Correct.
Then there's not this requirement to have supportive services. But if you want the tax exemption for 30.
Yeah, but if you provide 30%, you're already providing 20%. Once you provide 20%, you get the exemption.
I believe that exemption only applies to the number of units that qualify as affordable?
It, it applies to all of the new developments.
Really?
The tax exemption applies to the new development, but you have to incorporate at least 20% of the units as affordable.
Yeah, so if you build 100 units and 20 of them are affordable, you get the multifamily tax exemption credit, and you don't pay ad verum taxes on the 100 units.
No, you pay on those 20 units. The rest of them still fall under the regular tax requirements. For instance, Station by Vintage, granted, all the units are 100% affordable. But what I didn't mention is that the bottom floor is mostly commercial. And so that commercial doesn't qualify for any of those exemptions, and it's taxed at market rate. So you get,
Oh, that's correct.
Yeah.
But all of the, all of the housing.
The housing is 100% affordable. But that's because they're providing 100% affordable housing. Every unit is affordable. Now, if somebody comes in and wants to do a multifamily or mixed-use building, and they decide to dedicate 20% of that multifamily unit as affordable, then that 20% or those units become eligible for, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that tax exemption.
It, what, it's all of the residential that is, that is allowed the exemption.
Even the market rate?
Correct. It's, it's not the unresidential. This, this is, this entire RCW was written at the benefit of adding residential units. So if you're building a 100-unit development, you're getting the tax break for building that and providing residential dwelling units to your market. You, you only get it, though, if 20% of those are provided for all people to live in. So you get the lower moderate income. But once you achieve that for your 100-unit development, you've already achieved it.
It sounds like there's some question here. I'm also respectful that we're kind of running late. And we do have to send this to the city council for approval very quickly. It sounds like we need to revisit this at a later date, Ryan, for further clarification, anyway.
I think that the commission could make a recommendation to move this forward to city council this evening. And then we can revisit it again when we have to go back and, and go through the rest of it. And at that point in time, we can have additional figure out exactly Darren's point on that.
We could get a clarification of the law.
I would like more clarification on that as well.
Yeah.
I'm betting that most of the other commissioners agree as well.
Lisa, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I was just thinking, I will, I'll be looking here pretty quickly. But, you know, you can get a market rate exemption for up to eight years. So I don't see why, you know, you would get a break for 12 years on the market rate units if you would only get a break for eight years for market rate. So let me, I'll, I'll take a look here.
Ryan, I'm going to, unless some other commissioner wants to continue that particular discussion. I'm going to jump back to our trash can question.
So my recommendation on the trash can is not include it in the form-based code. And to, in, the city can look at it into the design and construction standards. Like I said, there is a trash receptacle as-built drawing or engineered drawing within the construction and design standards. And I have emailed the city public works director to include that as an item within the, the new revised construction standards.
Thank you. Is any commissioner not okay with that? All right, so does anybody, any other commissioner wish to speak or ask any questions about the form-based code? The infill exemption, the multifamily tax exemption, or the? Well, that's it.
I think, if I might, Mr. Chair, I think it only applies to the affordable units. I just put this section in, in the chat here. The exemption does not apply to the value of land or to the value of improvements not qualifying under this chapter. Nor does it apply to increases in assessed value of land and non-qualifying improvements.
So, yeah. Rephrase what you said. It only applies to the 20% of those units that would be affordable, correct?
That's how I read this, because you, it's anything that's not qualifying under this chapter.
Well, I think that's good enough for now. We're going to revisit this at a later day. I, unless any, does any other commissioner have any questions? I am ready to make a motion, but I have one question first. Commissioner Growth was talking about limiting the size of the party to the size of the condition, but I did not capture the section number.
I, I think it was a new section, but it was under 1831-234. Four is currently just four, but I believe it was paragraph B in that section.
That was part of the legal amendments.
You're talking about the height and story discussion?
No, that was the other issue he raised. He was talking about the clarifications from our attorneys. And I was unclear what section that was.
What section was it, Darren?
1831-230. It was, it's old number four, but on your red line, I think four was broken into an A and a B. I believe it's B.
Okay, so what, what is the language you want to add to that?
I have the language, I just need the section number.
4B.
31.
1831-230 subsection 4B.
4B. Okay.
And you, what was that language, Jonathan, if you don't mind?
The language that I was going to include was, as part of the amendments, was this. Apologies for the question mark. Does that sound all right, Ryan?
I think it sounds fine. What do you think, Bob?
Yeah, the other, what I had written down on my notes said, cannot exceed the extent of condition on, on which the departure was granted.
I like that, that language.
I'll type it in here.
Got it. Putting it back in. I think I got a chat message.
I have three computers running at one time, so I get, I get lost between going on and where I'm at. So, three computers, five monitors. Yeah, you should see this. It's ridiculous.
Okay, I've got a chat. I've got a few chat messages here. Let me sort through them. Okay, uh, okay. All right, I'm ready to make a motion. I will put the entire motion to the chat. And I will read it for the record. Finding that the amendments are in accordance with Covington Municipal Plan, or sorry, the Covington Comprehensive Plan and CMC 14.25.060 Selection and Decision Criteria for Comprehensive Plan Amendments and CMC 14.27.040 Decision Criteria for Zoning and Development Regulations. I move to recommend that the city council approve the Comprehensive Plan Amendments, zoning code amendments, infill exemption amendments, and multifamily tax exemption amendments in substantial form is found in the Planning Commission staff memo with the provisions that the proposed amendments provided by legal counsel, as presented by staffer included, with the amendment made by Commissioner Growth limiting the size of the departure to the size of the condition on which the departure was granted in section 18.31.230 for Bravo and the subsequent legal clarifications made to that amendment. A note is added to the right column associated with the max height in each zone in table 18.31.150. In the town center zone, 85 feet or no more than three additional stories. In the mixed commercial zone, 65 feet or no more than one additional story. In the general commercial zone, 55 feet or no more than two additional stories. Additional stories must be no more than 15 feet tall each. I know it's an awful. Is any commissioner?
I second that emotion.
Sorry, Darren, what, what was that?
I just said second, but.
You beat me to it then, Darren. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, I don't wish to speak to the motion. I've said more than enough. I appreciate your time. However, I will ask Darren to speak to his second if he wants to do so.
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, David, would you like to speak to the motion?
I think it covers all the information we covered tonight, and I think it does incorporate all of our many meeting discussions and definitely is going to make a difference for the city, a positive difference.
Jennifer, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, nothing further.
Joe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Nothing, thank you.
Kathy?
No, thank you.
Uh, there was a motion on the floor. I'm going to ask for a vote. Please indicate by verbally saying aye and by raising your hand so that your cameras can see. If you are in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 If you're opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. It appears to me that the motion passes six to zero. I believe that was our main objective for tonight. Thank you, everyone.
Well, if I could say something, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, thank you and thank you makers and thank Bob and Lisa and then Scott for all their hard work that they've done on this project. This is a, a very large planning effort, one of the largest planning efforts you'll see in our time within, within the city of Covington besides a comprehensive plan amendment. So thank you all for your diligent work on this and, and all the things that you brought to make this success. And we look forward to bringing this towards the, to the city council on the August 10th meeting for potential adoption and to be in compliance with the Department of Commerce grant. So thank you for your work this evening on this.
I do point out that the city council will hold a public hearing on this matter on August 10th. I know, Tom, you had asked a question about the zoning of a particular neighborhood. That is probably a better comment to ask of the city council.
Jonathan, just a point of a clarification. The plan is not to have a public hearing in front of the city council.
I apologize.
The reason for the public hearing at Planning Commission is you're required to have one public hearing. And the Planning Commission is the body that, that leads those public hearings. On some circumstances, if there are changes from what transpires this evening to when we go to the city council, then we would have some opportunity to have an additional public hearing. Uh, but since those items were gone through this evening, were presented, were debated, were scrutinized, we have met the requirements and we are not required to have an additional public hearing. I will go back to the office on Monday and see if there may be requests from uh, city council to have one anyway. And if that's the case, we will advertise it and move forward. I don't know if we will do an additional mailing like we did this time. We had quite a large public outreach. We, we noticed everybody within the downtown plan, within the downtown area and within 500 feet of that, including people outside of city limits. So they were all notified. We notified every single member that participated in all of our, all of our meetings. Uh, the lovely thing about Zoom is every time you log in, I have access to your emails. And so I add you to the record and I send emails to you regardless of, uh, if you participate or not. So you got the email. So everybody's been notified. All the state agencies have been notified. Uh, we received a letter from the Department of Commerce and support with a couple of clarifying suggestion changes which were made and they were very appreciative of that. So we are in very good standing to move forward with this recommendation to the city council.
Okay, uh, Tom, I will recommend that you go and talk with the city council at the first public comment section on that meeting to raise your question.
I think Lisa wanted to say something.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Yes, um, Mr. Chair, I wanted to mention that, um, this area of Covington has been designated and zoned, you know, uh, similarly for quite some time since before incorporation when the county, um, called it an activity center. Uh, in the environmental impact statement for the infill exemption, we did not propose zoning changes. Um, so the environmental documentation up to this point would not cover such a change um, that, um, the gentleman was asking for. Um, but it's certainly something that they could ask of the city to entertain in a future docket or as part of the periodic review of the, of the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. This has been a lot of work. This is the second longest document I've ever been through for the Planning Commission. I, I think that once we get to the Lake Point revisions, we're gonna be swamped with three or four times as much paper. Don't, don't run away. We need you all. Um, so moving on to new business, I see none on the agenda. Old business, I see none on the agenda. Would you need to take an attendance vote? Uh, we have, believe we have a reported, reported pre-absence from Murray. So all in favor of approving Murray's absence, please indicate by saying, raising your hand, saying aye.
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 Thank you. Anyone opposed? I have to ask. Uh, public comment. This is the start of our second public comment period. The same rules applies the first public comment period. If you are on the phone and you need to unmute yourself, to raise your hand, please say star nine or press star nine. The public comment period is now open. Once again, we are in the second public comment period. If you wish to speak, please, uh, raise your hand. I see no raised hands, Ryan.
Uh, no, I would request one more call, Mr. Chairman.
Once again, folks, we are in the final public comment period. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone and you wish to speak and you need to raise your hand, dial star nine. Okay, seeing no hands raised, I declare the second public comment period closed. And now onto comments and communications of staff and commissioners, and we'll start with the ever so talkative Daphne.
Hello, good night, uh, commission. I do have a clarification for the minutes for the absence of Murray. We do need a motion and a second, um, so we can go back to that. Um, and have you guys do that for the record?
I apologize. I formally move that we excuse Murray's absence. Do we have a second?
I hear you.
I saw Jennifer make a second, even though she was muted. Uh, sorry, Joe.
You did. Am I muted? I don't think I'm muted.
All right, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, Daphne, that good? That got you?
Yes, thank you so much. Just making sure that was on record. Um, secondly, uh, I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but the city does have a newer commission. It is the Equity, Fortune and Social Justice Commission. And I am the staff liaison and I just wanna go ahead and let you guys know that we have been meeting since January. Um, and we are, the commission is currently talking about action plans and kind of items that they would like to do. And I just want to invite you guys to come to our meetings. It is every fourth Thursday of the month at 6:30. And, um, if you know anyone that would like to join, or if you want to just stop by and listen or have any suggestions, uh, that the commission maybe would be interested in, um, we would love it. But I just want to make you guys aware of this commission. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Daphne. Uh, let's see, Ryan, would you like to say anything?
I would, Mr. Chairman. Uh, once again, thank you, uh, members of the Planning Commission for all your hard work on this and everything that you do for the city and all the time and dedication you put into reading, you know, a 279-page Form Based Code and, uh, all the other materials that we provided. I just wanted to give a brief update on some things you may or may not be aware of. There was a piece of legislation that was passed, uh, this last session called House Bill 1220. So in 2019, uh, permanent supportive housing was required to be in all zones and have multifamily dwellings. So the legislature expanded on that this year and all residential zones and zones that have hotels are required to have permanent supportive housing and transitional housing. That goes into effect on July 25th, 2021. Additionally, as part of House Bill 1220, on September 30th, 2021, another provision will go into effect that requires the city to have emergency shelters and emergency shelter, emergency housing facilities in all zones that have hotels as permanent uses. So there are three in the town center, or excuse me, three in the downtown and two in Lake Point that are going to be subject to the emergency shelter and emergency housing facilities. All residential zones are subject to, uh, transitional housing facilities and permanent supportive housing facilities. Now, when you look at, when you hear those words, a lot of people kind of get nervous about, oh, what is this going to do to our neighborhoods? It's gonna change the look of everything. Well, no, not really. Permanent supportive housing and transitional housing have requirements by the state and they are pretty stringent to follow. Uh, the city is working on a interim development regulation to be presented at the July 27th city council meeting that will add definitions to the municipal code for those items that I mentioned. And we will also be going through and looking at the use tables to determine, uh, permitted uses or conditional uses. An additional to that, we are going to potentially be looking at, uh, conditions of approval to add uh, for each one of those, uh, designations. So that's coming down the pipeline. We have no choice but to take that up. It's one of those mandates from the state and as we all love, uh, they just drop it on us. But the, the, the interesting part, and, and David's gonna love this, and Darren, I know, already loves this, that in House Bill 1220, it tells the cities that they are going to be provided data from the Department of Commerce as to what the need and capacity are going to be for these facilities. Well, I spoke with the Department of Commerce today and they're not expecting to have that information until a draft, until at least summer of 2022. So we have to be creative in what we do. So what we're looking at right now is there's a point in time count that's, that's done by King County. Uh, they're all the way back to 2017, 18, 19, and I believe they did one this last year, but hasn't been published yet. Uh, so what we did is we, we looked at the, the count numbers. And in 2019, in the southeast region of King County, which includes Maple Valley, Covington, Black Diamond, Enham Claw and the unincorporated areas, there were 65 individuals that were unsheltered facing homelessness. So what we have to have are regulations that are, uh, reasonable. And reasonable was not defined by the legislature, nor is a reasonable able to come up with, because we don't have the numbers from Commerce. So what we did is we took the population for each jurisdiction in our designated region. We averaged that out and we looked at what percentage Covington was of that total population. And so Covington was 33%. So worst-case scenario, let's say that that number 65 jumps up to 80. So we would be required to provide supportive housing for 33% of that 80, which is 26 individuals. So now, when you look at the, the use and the, the, uh, the zoning, we're taking a look at areas within the downtown zones to have the emergency shelters and the emergency housing facilities and what capacity, what, what, uh, what we're gonna have with that. So that's being created now and that's going to be brought to council on the 27th. I have to have it done by Monday, so, uh, just take note that that is coming down as a future amendment to the code. It's, it's one of those things that we get blessed with by the state and have to make those changes. But there is a need. We do have a need within the community and it's something that we're gonna have to take a look at. Now, based on that, uh, we, we have some opportunities to look at different ways of going about it. Uh, there's a lot of examples out right now and some of them are pretty good. Some of them are really poor. Uh, in fact, there was one jurisdiction that completely, a jurisdiction in Pierce County actually eliminated hotels as permitted uses throughout the city, so, um, I don't think that's something we want to do because we have hotels listed in five zoning districts. So there's always more than one way to take a look at this. And our legal counsel and myself are, are working diligently and around the clock to try to come up with a plan. And I think based on what I described by the calculations, that comes up with a reasonable, uh, reasonable approach that could be defendable since we don't have the data. So when we do have the data, we're gonna have to make some changes to address that. And it may increase, it may decrease, and, uh, we'll have to address that when that time comes. So that's one of the things that we're working on right now. It's a very big project and, uh, I'm looking forward to working with you on that. Another item that, uh, just bring your attention is we received a request from city council to provide a update or- is we received a request from city council to provide a update or a a report on growth targets in King County and specifically the city of Covington. And it's kind of nice to have those conversations every now and then. It just so happened that today I had a very intriguing conversation with an interested property owner and representative about future growth within Covington and urban growth areas. As of right now, Covington does not have an urban growth area designated by King County. That's because the city has capacity within its land, within its buildable lands designations or buildable land study to have the future capacity up to twenty forty-four. So, with the changes that came out with this, with this growth targets, and you know, if you watch the city council meeting, you've seen that, you heard that last time when they provided that information to you. The capacity is based on pipeline projects, areas that could be redeveloped, areas that haven't been, haven't been developed, areas that contain critical areas and in other aspects. And so, we looked at that and I believe, you know, right now, the housing targets are right around fourth, it's in four thousand to twenty twenty forty-four. But please take in mind that forty percent of that is going to be Lake Point. So, the numbers may seem daunting, they may seem large, but when we look at the big picture of things, it's going to, it's going to even out. City's going to grow regardless of what we do. It's going to grow and we have to work to accommodate that. Now, jobs is a different picture. Jobs are, our capacity for jobs is actually around eight thousand up to twenty twenty-four. But the King County has decided to give us a growth target right around, I believe, forty-four hundred, forty-five hundred. So, I'll have those exact numbers laid out. But this is, this is based on a long range of studies that have been done over the years back, you know, two thousand twelve. There's been all kinds of things going on and we'll be making a presentation to council on the twenty-seventh. So, other than that, we're busy. We have all kinds of things going on and a lot of developments that are going to be coming on here pretty soon. We're making some substantial gains on a lot of projects. And Daphne has been outstanding with her, her new formed commission. And she deserves a lot of credit for her professionalism and for working with this new commission to putting together their mission statement and some of their goals that they have throughout the year. So, thank you, Daphne, for all your hard work. Once again, thank you, commissioners, for all your work and thank you for the public to attend, that attended this evening. Tom, thank you for your comments. We will be looking at those in the future. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Ryan. Let's move through the commissioners. I'll start with Kathy.
I have nothing.
Okay, Joe?
A good meeting, a lot of helpful information. Thank you, Ryan, especially for leading, your leadership and your input.
David, anything else?
It's been quite an evening. I want to say thank you to our consultants for all the help that they've done through this process for the form-based code. I feel almost like we're in front of a tsunami of additional activities coming our way. And with the state mandates that they've come up with, I hope they allow us to, or hope they bring money to assist with some of this because it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me if it's going to go forward without being able to provide that type of support to the cities that have to go through with it. Other than that, you guys, thank you. Have a good evening and have a good weekend. Thanks.
Jennifer?
Sorry, I do have a few questions. I guess first, Ryan, is there an update on staff?
No. There is not an update on staff. So, the consultant that was hired to do a search has completed the application process that was due on the eleventh of July. They are going to begin their first round of interviews next week, which they will then create a short list of candidates to forward to the city. So, the city can then start reviewing for the new community development director. That being said, we've been given direction that we will not be hiring additional staff until the director is hired and in place at the city. There's a lot of reasons behind that. I mean, it's always good that, you know, you hire a director that can pick and choose their team because, you know, if you ever read Good to Great, it's about getting the right people on the bus and getting them in the right positions. And I thoroughly believe in that. So, whoever comes in as the director is going to have a lot of work ahead of them. And, you know, they will have my support. And we will, we will get through this. We just, we'll hire some very talented individuals and we'll build our team even stronger. And once we're a hundred percent capacity, we're going to be rolling through a lot of stuff. So, my workload right now is really high. Daphne's is really high. And things are going to be, things are going to be a little hectic for a while, but you know, we're positive that things are going to come out on, on the bright side. And Tuesday is my first interview. So, that'll be interesting.
Okay. And so, can we get an update on our future meeting schedule? I'm assuming we'll have both in August, but I guess I just wanted to check.
Well, hopefully, we can take one meeting off in August. The city council takes the second meeting off in August historically. I was planning on coming back with something on August fifth, kind of a follow-up to our discussion that we had on recreational standards to get that moving because we, the idea was to try and get that moving at the same time, form-based code, because form-based code and change the recreation standards in the town center. We want to have the recreational standards for the rest of the city. So, I looked into, you know, some of the questions that Kathy had and some of the ideas that Darren had and and we're working on revising that right now. We've, we've kind of had to put that on the back burner because we were getting so far ahead in this, this code, form-based code that we had to really push this out and get things moving. So, we're, we're making progress, but there's, there's going to be more stuff coming down the line.
Okay. And then I think my final question was about that email we got regarding masks, or I guess it's not about that email, but are we thinking that the meeting on August fifth is going to be in person?
So, what is going on right now is the city is drafting a policy for for meetings. And they're looking at kind of the hybrid model in person and through, through Zoom or some other technology. The city's actually looking at potentially going out for bid for a communication system that would allow us to do both, would allow us to have the opportunity to have our meetings recorded within the council chambers, allow people to participate via Zoom or another avenue. And if any council members or commissioners were absent, they can continue to participate online if that's what they choose. And, you know, if, if you're not vaccinated, I believe you always have that opportunity to choose which route you want to go. The email that you received today was in response to us putting together the list of who's been vaccinated. And I don't need to know the dates. I just need to see the card. Once I see the card, I check your name off and don't have to ask you again. And that's just so that we can move forward. We had to do that. Every staff member who wants to be at work, who doesn't want to wear a mask has to, has to show that they have been they've got their, their shots. So, that's already in place.
Yeah. So, I guess I was wondering if we were going to do that tonight or what, what's kind of the plan for when to do that? Because I saw the virtual conference or whatever was an option.
Well, I, if you want to do it tonight, once we, once we stop the meeting recording.
Then those of us that want to do it can do it.
Want to do that tonight, I will stick around and we will, we will take a look at that if that's what you prefer. If not, you can call me and schedule a time where you can meet me at city hall. My office hours are Monday through Thursday, seven AM to five thirty PM. Sometimes I have to leave early or I come in late based on flexing my schedule with working these late night meetings and stuff. So, just let me know. I don't want an email with a copy of your card. I don't think that's necessary. And I wouldn't want to violate any HIPAA regulations or anything like that. They just want us to verify who's been, who hasn't been that way. When we do open the doors and have, you know, commission meetings, we have an idea of what we're looking at to decide how we're going to do the virtual process.
Okay, that's all. Thank you. Sorry, everybody. That was longer than I thought it would take.
No, that answered a lot of questions that I'd already emailed Ryan about. So, thank you.
Okay.
I, I think I, you know, I pulled my card out. So, I'm ready to do it tonight.
Yep, I'll do mine tonight, too. Might as well get it over with.
Agreed.
I think the last person I hadn't gotten to was Darren. Is that correct?
Everything's been already said. David, I echo your comments. Appreciation, Ryan, appreciation for the consultants that have helped us. Good questions, Jennifer. Just one thing, Ryan, at the end of this tunnel, if you do get that help that you need, make sure you get to your opportunity to sharpen the saw for yourself and give Daphne that break that she probably deserves too. Once everything kind of settles. Seems like you guys are putting in a lot of work.
She will definitely get a break.
Definitely appreciate everything you're bringing us.
Hopefully, she will also maybe we'll look at some type of promotional activity, but I can't really speak about that yet.
Okay.
That's everything for me. Thanks.
Okay, I'd like to say thank you to Darren and I'm sorry, not so Ryan and Daphne for all the work getting everything together. I know it's been challenging consultants. I know it's a lot of stuff. Thank you all the commissioners for paying attention to such serious and boring matters. And let's see, beyond that, I am informed that Vine Maple Places is once again in desperate need of beds. So, you can check that out yourself. I'm on their website. I'm not going to go into the details. And then finally, I wanted to remind you all that Covington is actually accepting nominations for Citizen of the Year and Honorary Citizen of the Year. I put the URL in the chat. Please go out and think about it and nominate someone that you think is appropriate. And in deference to Daphne, I did actually suggest that they change the award to Covingtonian of the Year and Honorary Covingtonian of the Year. So, and I have not gotten a response to the city council from that particular request. So, and that is everything I have. I hereby declare this meeting of the Covington Planning Commission closed at eight fifty-three PM. We are now done. Thank you, everyone. Great work.
Thank you, everybody who participated.